All right, good evening. I'll bring this regular city council meeting to order. If you could please rise for the invocation by Pastor Grant Foster.
Let's pray. Father, first we thank you so much for your blessings in our lives. We thank you for this beautiful city that you've given us to live in. We ask your wisdom and guidance for Mayor McPartland and the entire council, for our wonderful city manager, Mr. Griffin, and Lord his entire staff. We just pray, Father, that you'd give wisdom, guidance, and direction, and we thank you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Mayor McPartland.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Coy has asked for an excused absence. Councilmember Gilmore has asked for an excused absence. Councilmember Hill.
I am here.
Thank you.
All right. Counsel, any agenda modifications? No? It leads us up into proclamation, so first one will be Beth Mitchell from the chamber. Everybody happy? All right, excellent, excellent. All right, well, welcome. This is a proclamation for Travel and Tourism Week, May 1st through the 7th, whereas travel is among the largest private sector employers in the United States, supporting 15 million jobs in 2014, including 8 million directly in the travel industry and 7 million in other industries; and whereas travel-related services generated $141.5 billion in tax revenues for federal, state, and local governments; and whereas in 2015 Florida welcomed 105 million out-of-state and international visitors, marking the fifth consecutive record year for Florida tourism. Overall, visitors spent $89.1 billion. Locally, Indian River County tourist taxes were up $367,912.14, or 19.2 percent for the 2014-15 fiscal year; and whereas meetings, events, and incentive travel are core business functions that help companies strengthen business performance, educate employees and customers, and reward business accomplishments, in 2014 domestic and international business travelers spent $283 billion; and whereas leisure travel spurs countless benefits to travelers' health and wellness, creativity, cultural awareness, education, happiness, productivity, and relationships; and whereas travel has a positive effect on Florida and the nation's economic prosperity and image abroad and creates jobs at a faster rate than other sectors, now therefore I, Mayor Bob McPartland, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Sebastian, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim May 1st through the 7th as National Travel and Tourism Week in Sebastian and urge the citizens of Sebastian, Florida, to join me in support of the city's travel and tourism industry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor McPartland. I'd like to take a few moments to introduce the people that actually make this happen at the chamber. All the way at my right is Vicki Wild. She's our membership director. And in the middle is Nicole Holbrook. Nicole is our tourism director. And in November Nicole will be celebrating 10 years of working with the Chamber of Commerce. Brittany Malchiori is our marketing and communications person at the chamber, and she will be celebrating seven years with us in June. I have a very brief presentation that I'd like to do. We celebrated a grand opening of the Pelican Porch Visitor Center two weeks ago, and I'd just like to talk to you and counsel for just a couple of moments. Ladies, thank you for all your work. I appreciate. Yeah, you do. All right, well, thank you. Thank you to the city for the proclamation. I really appreciate that. I won't take up very much time, but I did want to talk about the project. It really was a milestone for the chamber and for the city. In 1978, a group of builders and contractors got together, and they helped Renee Van de Vorty, who was a very young attorney, put up the first Chamber of Commerce building on the intersection of Main Street and US-1. I'm sorry, I don't have a picture of that, but we have made a lot of progress since 1978. And what you're looking at today is pictures of the building as it existed just prior to our renovations. And the ladies pointed out to me that there's also a picture just over Councilmember Hill's head of the actual building, which had served as a city council chambers. There was city hall. It was a police station. It was a fire station. It was a recreationals and even a library, I think, at one point. But in 2005, the chamber worked very closely with the city, and we negotiated a lease for 50 years to ensure that we would continue to have a presence at that intersection. And part of the arrangement was that we would have it for 50 years, but we would be required to do renovations. Fast forward, in 2007, 2008, while we were trying to move forward with fundraising efforts, as we all know, the Great Recession came to Sebastian. In 2010, the city council very graciously extended the timeframe for us to get those renovations done and gave us another five years. So in 2005, we had gone into the fundraising mode. The economy got better, and we pulled the permits on time and started the project. So the first slide shows you the front of the chamber building, but I'm going to just give you a little description of some of the work that we have done. And first of all, are the exterior improvements to the building. We put a new roof on the building, which put us back in compliance with the Riverfront District overlay. We took out all of these glass windows and bricked the building up. We installed two gigantic air conditioning units. And then, of course, there was the porch. I did want to mention that during the fundraising effort, we had over 175 businesses, organizations contribute to the project. And the total cost, when it was all said and done, was a little over $200,000. We're also very pleased with the fact that while we had a line of credit with Acolina Bank, we never had to use that, and all of our bills are paid, and we're moving forward. Let's see here, the next slide. This is what the north side of the building looks like today, and you can see it as you're driving on US-1. This is one of the first improvements that we did last summer. Mickey Cap, Cap Construction Builders, was, of course, our contractor. And when he installed that porch and opened up that front door and put that sidewalk in, people were elated. They no longer had to walk all the way around from our parking lot to the front of the building, which then was the north side of the building. And as you can see, everything that we've done is handicapped accessible, and people are just very, very pleased. This is a front view of the picture with the rocking chairs installed. They're being taken in and taken out every night. Ultimately, they will be permanently installed, so we don't have to move them around. There's also a viewfinder on the porch, and you can overlook the lagoon. I always turn it to the Sebastian Inlet Bridge, but some people kind of like to scan around and see if they can see Pelican Island. We also were very happy when the Indian River County Tourism Development Council granted us another $25,000 in money to do some interior improvements. And we've done some extensive improvements on the inside. The new floor you're looking at is a commercial wood vinyl floor. Everybody asks me that, so I have to tell you that's what it is. That was almost completely donated by Florida Floor Fashions. And the air conditioning units I talked about earlier were from Custom Air Systems. So what I'm trying to explain to you all is that our business community really stepped up to the plate. Inside the building, in the visitor center section of it, we have a lot of new bells and whistles. The screen that you're looking at actually shows seven videos that we have accumulated over the years. It's the destination video for Sebastian, the destination video for Felsmere, the fishing traditions video that was created by the state of Florida. Feather Wars is another one. And so our visitors have the option, they can come in, and there's a little menu there, they can ask us to see whatever video they want to. And we have the ability to show them that. Oh, I thought I might have missed a slide. No, well, this is the slide, I'm sorry. On the left-hand side shows you two screens that are hanging, and those are connected to webcams. Currently, they both are hooked up to the Sebastian Inlet webcam, but another collaborative effort happened with Pelican Island Preservation Society. While we had the money to install a new webcam at Pelican Island, we were short-funding for the long-term maintenance of that webcam. And so Pelican Island Preservation Society has agreed to pick up those costs, and that webcam, access to that webcam will be available to the public and, of course, inside the chamber offices. And that new webcam is being installed today. We have an interactive kiosk that connects people to our website, so they can come in and book reservations. They can do hotel rooms. They can look up restaurant menus. They also have the ability to look at all of our attractions and then make plans to get out and enjoy Sebastian, which is what this whole project is all about. I promise to be brief. We did have a grand opening two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and we had a great turnout, and we've had a lot of visitors come in and out since then. But particularly for the residents in our community, anybody that has ever been to the chamber building, we are extending an invitation for you to come and see the new improvements. And finally, my last comment is to thank the council members that have stayed with us on this project. It's taken a little bit longer than anybody might have anticipated, but I like to say that good things are worth waiting for. So thank you very much.
All right, next, Leslie Spurlock. All right, this is a proclamation for Tobacco-Free Florida Week, May 8th through the 14th. Whereas even though Florida has made substantial strides in the progress of smoke-free policy, Floridians are still involuntarily affected by secondhand smoke's toxic chemicals; and whereas low levels of smoke exposure can lead to the dysfunction and inflammation of the lining of the blood vessels, which are implicated in heart attacks and stroke, and low-smoke exposure also significantly increases the risk of lung cancer; and whereas in the United States, two out of five children ages 3 to 11 are exposed to secondhand smoke, and 35.9 percent of Florida middle school students and 39.7 percent of Florida high school students reported being exposed to secondhand smoke in a room or car in the past week; and whereas the best way smokers can protect their loved ones is to quit and support smoke-free policies, which denormalize tobacco use so that fewer youths start; and whereas since 2007, more than 126,000 Floridians have successfully quit tobacco using one of Tobacco-Free Florida's three free and easy ways to quit. Now therefore I, Bob McPartland, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Sebastian, and on behalf of the Sebastian City Council, do hereby recognize the week of May 8th through the 14th as Tobacco-Free Florida Week and encourage all citizens to make publicly known the dangers of secondhand smoke exposure and urge tobacco users to demonstrate to themselves, their friends, and their families that they can quit smoking.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. Thank you for proclaiming it to be Tobacco-Free Florida Week. We know that some people are still unaware of how harmful secondhand smoke is. Breathing even small amounts of it can be very dangerous. They did mention lung cancer, but lung cancer is not only Florida's number-one form of terminal cancer, but it is also the number-one form of terminal cancer in Indian River County. 17 percent of Indian River's middle school students are exposed to secondhand smoke in public. We talked about how they are exposed at home or in a car, but this is in the public, still, 17 percent. Even if there's not a smoker in the home, secondhand smoke can enter multi-unit buildings through doorways and cracks in the walls, plumbing, and electrical outlets, and even to other units that are up above. And then, when it comes to asthma in children, 40 percent of children who go to our emergency rooms actually live with smokers. It's really a big risk factor for them. So in Indian River, the Tobacco-Free Partnership is making the public aware of all this secondhand smoke, and we actually also help guide other organizations in the process of going smoke-free. And some of the leaders in our county are the following. Chive Restaurant, they have two locations, and they have a tobacco-free patio. Courtyard Villas provides smoke-free multi-unit housing in Vero Beach. Indian River Medical Center has a tobacco-free environment for all its employees and visitors and patients. And they also have taken the step to not hire people who are tobacco users. The Senior Resource Association and Piper Aircraft, Treasure Coast Community Health Center, and the School District of Indian River County all have completely tobacco-free campuses. So our goal this year is to make sure that all Floridians are aware of secondhand smoke. And we encourage everyone to join the fight against the tobacco industry and make Florida a healthier place to live. So we're very proud of also what the city council does. And I'd like to also honor them. Because this city council, their leadership has been outstanding for tobacco control policies, and your support's very critical to local citizens. Each supportive act, whether it's been a resolution or an ordinance, decreases pro-tobacco influences in the county. In this state, we have a preemption clause, various legal opinions about the Florida Clean Indoor Act that prevents local governments and its citizens from enacting stronger smoke-free laws. But did you know that Florida was also the test case for the tobacco industry? Using preemption to tie the hands of local citizens and their governments. The tobacco industry does not have the resources to fight us locally, so they go to the state and say, "We want you to not let the local governments make stronger laws." So you've created healthier environments here in Sebastian by using signage to decrease smoking in your parks. You've demonstrated your support with a resolution against flavored tobacco. You passed an ordinance placing electronic cigarettes behind the counter and setting an age limit of 18 and older to purchase them. This council was the first to do that. And they were also proactive in being the first to take that additional step so that prohibiting use of electronic cigarettes where other tobacco products are prohibited. Decreasing these types of pro-tobacco influences can't be done without the commitment of our local officials. We honor you and commend you for the role that you have taken in protecting the health of Sebastian residents by presenting you with this plaque of appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Leslie. I mean, I guess you could also look at the problems of, you know, smoke can lead to low birth weight on children, and that's one of the things the Community Health Improvement Plan is looking for in Indian River County, infant mortality. And smoking plays a large role in that, so anything we can do to decrease that and increase baby's weight is always great. Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation. Chief Morris and your crew. This is for National Peace Officers Memorial Day, you know? And hey, these guys are fantastic, you know? I mean, I, you know, I cover the four counties, so I work with a lot of the sheriff's offices and a lot of municipalities. Sebastian is aces everywhere we go. You know, and tomorrow night they have their Citizens Academy graduation. I've been to a lot of the Citizens Academies in the other counties and the other municipalities. I think ours is the best. And we had the Advanced Citizens Academy from the sheriff's office that came to visit yesterday. And of course, I had to use my little bit of my political will because one of the officers was saying how we have the greatest Sebastian police volunteers around. I said, "Well, we love everybody, but yes, we do have the best, even though it's on tape, and it's fantastic." But this is a proclamation for National Peace Officers Memorial Day, which is May 15th. National Police Week, May 15th through the 21st. Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week; and whereas members of the city of Sebastian Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the city; and whereas it is important that all citizens understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their police department, which include safeguarding life and property, protecting citizens against violence and disorder, the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression; and whereas the men and women of the city of Sebastian Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service, now therefore I, Bob McPartland, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Sebastian and on behalf of the Sebastian City Council, do hereby call upon all residents to observe the week of May 15th through the 21st as National Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances, and further to observe May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their communities or have become disabled in the performance of their duty.
Again, it's important to recognize that this event is recognized for those who have given their lives in the service of this job. May 16th, at the courthouse in Vero, at 10 o'clock in the morning, the county will have an event that recognizes, it's a short, brief event for about 30 minutes, that recognizes the sacrifice for those officers that aren't with us anymore. Thank you very much for the recognition.
And also, on behalf of our chief police and our officers of our police department, thank you very much for all your support.
Thank you. She got it? Wayne Estle time. At least some of the people have taken the opportunity to read in between, so I don't have to do all the reading. I get to catch my breath a little bit. But this is a proclamation for Building Safety Month, May. Whereas our city's continuing efforts to address the critical issues of safety, energy, efficiency, water conservation, and resilience in the built environment that affect our citizens both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, give us confidence that our structures are safe and sound; and whereas our confidence is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings; and whereas building safety, energy, and fire prevention codes include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes; and whereas Building Safety Month reminds the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings; and whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider projects to improve building safety and sustainability at home and in the community and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore I, Bob McPartland, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Sebastian, and on behalf of the Sebastian City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Building Safety Month and urge residents to support the efforts of Sebastian's Building Department.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to encourage everybody to get a chance to come by the Building Department. We have a fresh batch of brochures and handouts and things about building safety and backyard safety, pool safety, hurricane preparedness, and others. So get a chance to come by. There's a lot of good information there. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. All right, Art Chaska, your turn. This is another one. This is a proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month, you know, which is May, and Art is part of Suncoast, which, you know, provides services to, you know, help people with mental illness. And that was another key component of the Community Health Improvement Plan had to do with mental health, not only, you know, trying to build capacity for people to get resources, access to them, as well as to try and, you know, the stigma that's attached to mental illness, you know, which is unfortunate. You know, if you ever say, "Hey, I'm going to council," and everybody says, "Well, what's wrong with you, Bob?" Well, a lot of things are wrong with me. But if you look at it, you know, as you're going for coaching, you know, if you can't shoot free throws or hit a baseball, you get a coach, which is the same kind of thing with mental illness. If you look at it as getting a coach to get you through, because you can have the difference between an ordinary life and an extraordinary life. And services like Suncoast and the other partners who are out there, you know, helping people with mental illness, it's immeasurable, you know, what you're doing. So this is a proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas mental health helps to sustain an individual's thought processes, relationships, productivity, and ability to adapt to change or face adversity; and whereas mental illness adversely affects those abilities and often is life-threatening in nature; and whereas 12 youth under the age of 24 commit suicide every day in the United States, in 2014, there were 26 suicides in Indian River County. Whereas one in 17 adults lives with mental illness such as major depression, bipolar disorder, or schizophrenia; and whereas long delays, sometimes decades, often occur between the time symptoms first appear and when individuals get help, early identification and treatment can make a profound difference in successful management of mental illness and recovery; and whereas every citizen and community can make a difference in helping end the silence and stigma, and through education, learn the symptoms to help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness. Now therefore I, Bob McPartland, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Sebastian, and on behalf of the Sebastian City Council, do hereby recognize the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month to increase public understanding of the importance of mental health and promote identification and treatment of mental illnesses. It's good to keep this here because we cover up Art's tie because he's a huge Cardinals fan, and of course, they're the Mets' archenemy. But we get along great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor McPartland, city council members, and all in attendance. I am Art Chaska, CEO of Suncoast Mental Health Center. And with me tonight, two of our best supporters, our board treasurer, Mr. Frank Jensen, and then also our best volunteer, and her name is Mary Chaska, same last name as this here.
He always says that because I make dinner.
But we really appreciate this recognition of May as Mental Health Awareness Month. And some of the information that Mayor McPartlin shared is pretty staggering when you really think about it. And I'm actually going to provide just a little bit more information for a couple of minutes. And I want to start with children, and Mayor McPartlin mentioned about children, people under the age of 24 in the United States. Eleven of them a day end their life by suicide in the United States of America. But let me give you a little bit more information about children. If you look at kids between the ages of eight and 18, 20% of those kids, one in every five, will have a mental health disorder that is severe enough to cause a significant impairment in their day-to-day lives. Now, where are those kids in their day-to-day lives? Well, they're usually in school. And how does that play out in the learning environment? Studies are showing that these children with mental health disorders, if they are untreated or undertreated, they are failing more classes, they are missing more days of school, they are earning a lower grade point average, and they're being retained at grade level more than children with any other disability. Okay? And if you look at those kids when they hit the age 14 and older, 50%, 5-0% of those children will drop out of high school. And those kids who drop out of high school with a mental health disorder, if it's untreated or undertreated, 75% of that group will be arrested within five years. You can understand the importance of early detection, identification, and treatment of mental health disorders among children. We know, when we can work with them early on, they're going to be more successful in the learning environment, more successful in the family environment than in society. With adults, I want to let you know that, you know, and Mayor McPartlin shared some statistics about adults, but we know that with adults, when we get them into treatment for mental health issues or mental illness, we will decrease the disability rate, we will increase employment productivity, we will decrease criminal justice costs, and we will decrease that suicide rate. The CDC, and I just have to share this in closing here, because it just came out last week, the CDC, Center for Disease Control in Atlanta, came out last week and said, "In the United States of America, suicide is on the increase dramatically, 24% increase since 1999." And in every group they look at, they're increasing. But the groups with the highest rate of suicides, two groups have the highest rate of suicides, white, middle-aged males, and pre-teen females. Okay? Again, we know that with early detection, identification, and treatment and prevention, people will lead happier, healthier, productive lives. Suncoast Mental Health Center is very proud to be here in Indian River County. We're located in Vero Beach on Old Dixie Highway and proud to have been serving a lot of schoolkids and a lot of residents of Indian River County since 1998. We thank you for this recognition of May as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Oh, you're welcome. Yeah, it's one of the things you say about suicide also is, you know, the Treasure Coast, we have almost a 30% higher average than the state of Florida, people that are committing suicide. So keep in mind, there's organizations like Suncoast they can call, or 211. So if anybody out there has somebody who's struggling with anything, contact 211 or 911 to get those people help. There we go. Ready? Final proclamation of the evening for Safe Boating Week. You know, and this is, you know, you guys do a tremendous job, and I just got to share is, you know, the gentleman who survived that accident that happened in Martin County, he works for me in the department. You know, they, four people went out on a boating trip and thought nothing would happen. Only one of them made it home. You know, and so, you know, the classes and everything that you offer are, you know, instrumental in preventing accidents and, you know, educating people so they can enjoy the water. So this is a proclamation for Safe Boating Week, May 21 through the 27th. Whereas recreational boating is fun and enjoyable, and the citizens and visitors of Sebastian are fortunate that we have sufficient waterway and ocean resources to accommodate a wide variety of pleasure boating activities. And whereas not knowing or obeying the nautical rules of the road, using alcohol or drugs while operating a boat, or choosing not to wear a life jacket are examples of very risky boating behaviors that often lead to disaster. On average, 700 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the United States, with approximately 70% of these caused by drowning. And whereas knowledge and skills are important in reducing human error and improving judgment, if people are aware of the risks, they are likely to take precautionary measures such as always wearing a life jacket to protect themselves, friends, and family. That is why we must continue to spread the messages of boating safety, not only during National Safe Boating Week, but also throughout the entire year. And whereas at times, disaster still strikes even when we are prepared, but thanks to the courageous women and men who serve our nation and protect our waters, the United States Coast Guard stands always ready to help keep our citizens safe on the water. I encourage everyone to visit www.uscgboating.org to learn more about responsible boating. Together, we can enjoy the beauty and bounty of the water and avoid preventable injuries and property damage. Now therefore, by Bob McParland, by virtue of the authority vested in me, as Mayor of the City of Sebastian, and on behalf of the Sebastian City Council, do hereby support the goals of the North American Safe Boating Campaign, including the Wear It Life Jacket Program, and proclaim May 21 through the 27th as Safe Boating Week, and encourage all citizens who participate in boating activities to observe this occasion by learning more about safe boating practices.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for this proclamation or Safe Boating Week. Just a couple of quick things about safe, to add to the Safe Boating proclamation. You know, please, 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 wear your life jacket when you're out in a boat. Accidents happen very quickly, and if you don't have the life jacket on, it could be disastrous. Another little tip to advertise is, it'd be really great if you carried what we call an eperb, a personal rescue beacon. They take the search out of search and rescue, and so we don't have to go out, and the active coast guard don't have to go out and look for you. We just need to go out and rescue you. So it saves a whole bunch of money and will quickly get you the rescue that you need if you have one of these eperbs. So wear your life jacket, bring an eperb, set it off, satellite gets a signal, and we get notified and come out and get you. And with that, just a couple of other quick dates to remember. Key dates. Wear Your Life Jacket to Work Day. Would you like to wear your life jacket?
On a motorcycle.
Friday, 20 May, Wear Your Life Jacket to Work. The Wear It Worldwide Record Event is Saturday, 21 May, and we're going to do that down at Riverside Park in Vero Beach at the Boat Ramp. Y'all come down, we'll take your name, take your picture, add you to the record book, and hopefully, we're going to break some records this year. And then, of course, the National Safe Boating Week, 21 to 27 May. So again, Mayor, thank you very much. Appreciate your support.
Thank you. All right. That leads us up to Brief Announcements. The Chamber of Commerce will have a concert in the park.
One more.
Oh, I missed one. Hey, somebody's got to keep me straight here. I'm sorry. Hey, I apologize. John Donaldson, going to give us a presentation from Cito Foundation for Boating Safety.
I apologize for kind of doing this off the hip. I was out towing most of the day. I contacted the Chamber about trying to do a life jacket stand at the ramps. I got hold of Mr. Griffin from the city manager, and then he asked me to come over and do a presentation here, so that's where I'm at right now. What is the Cito Foundation? The Cito Foundation is a nationwide foundation, promotes safe boating, and one of the big things we have is the Life Jacket Loner Program. What ends up happening is, people come out, they go on vacations, they come visit their aunts and uncles, grandparents, whatever, they go out on the boat, and they forget a life jacket. They don't have one. What we want to be able to do is have these life jackets available, so they don't just go, "Oh, we've got enough, we'll go out there." So what these, let's see, this one we don't really need. This is about Designated Skipper, which is another part of, but the Life Jacket Loner Program is one of our major funds on it. It is nationally funded. We actually have a federal grant from it. But this just gives you a little bit of information of what happened. In 2014, there were 610 deaths, 108 of them were alcohol use, 337 of them did not have life jackets on. So we really, really like to promote the life jacket part of it. Drownings happen in vessels less than 21 feet, which is about what the average vessel around here is. Most of our vessels around here are considerably smaller. It says that at the ages between 19 and 25, there were 67 deaths, 340 injuries, 26 to 35, 76 deaths. And you can see as they get older, which, you know, it only makes sense that people aren't wearing their life jackets. This is the Designated Skipper Program we like to try to do. We get people to make pledges that they'll either not operate a vessel while they're drinking, or designate somebody else that is not going to drink out of it. There's our pledge that we were talking about. We have various marketing material that we hand out, buckslips, coasters, posters, stickers, and wristbands for people to at least be aware that they should designate a sober driver. And these are some of the things that we do out there for the last couple of years, and how many partners we have, and how many cities and states. This is what we're going to, I wanted to talk about is the Life Jacket Loner Program. There are 35,000 life jackets that we've distributed into 298 stations throughout the United States. We'd like Sebastian to be one of those. We have a grant for it, so there's no money out of pocket. It's, everything is set up, all we need to do is get permission to get them out there. If you can see, there's our kids with the life jackets on, and these are one of the stands that would be out there. That's kind of what they would look like. You get 54 jackets, they go from infant to extra-large. It stands by itself. We maintain it, we restock it, we check it on, everything out on it. All we do is ask permission to be able to put it out there. And here are the locations of the stands as we are today. So you can see that they're just about everywhere. Like I said, in 2014, 15, we had 5,800 life jackets distributed, 70 partners hosting them, 298 life jacket loner stations in 68 states and 29, or 68 cities in 29 states. And then this is just the reason why, and some of the other people out there that are partners with us. This is all basically just for a reason for us to have our partners out there, and then this is the funding that we have out of, just so if you need to know where we're getting the monies from. That's all I have for it.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Do we have a stand out here locally?
We don't. That's what I'm trying to do, is get one at the Main Street and at Yakav if we could.
All right. So what's that take? Just Mr. Griffin to say, "Hey, you can do it."
I just needed approval and then, you know, location of exactly where you would like to put it. Then I can have everything here within a matter of days.
All right. Sounds like a good idea to me.
I wanted to get this in front of council to make sure that council approves, and as I understand it, these stands are portable, so if there's some weather coming in or something like that, we'll be able to get things moved around, so it won't blow away and things like that. But I'll get with Mr. Donaldson, and we'll find appropriate places.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Donaldson? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joe. All right. Leads us up to Brief Announcements. The Chamber of Commerce has a concert in the park this Friday from 8:30 to 8:00 p.m., and the band will be Soul Jam. And then, a week from Friday, on May 20th, the Chamber will have another concert in Riverview Park, and the band will be Relayer. Council, any other brief announcements? All right. Leads us up to Item 7, our Consent Agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to actually pull an item.
Okay. Which one?
I'd like to pull Item F.
F?
Yes.
Okay. Get a motion on arrest against that agenda, or?
Move to expire, move to approve Consent Agenda, all items except F.
Second. Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. That passes. All right. Mr. Adams, you wanted to pull Item 7F?
Yes, I just wanted clarification on a term that's been used in Item F, trade times.
We have had a contract, an agreement with Golf Now for the past two years. As part of that agreement, we were giving up two tee times per day to Golf Now. Those two tee times would represent eight golf slots. So let's say that they were all filled, and there were eight golf slots that were going out, and the average price was $40 per tee, tee time. So that eight times 40, that would be $320 per day that we would lose in revenue for the privilege of operating with Golf Now. Now, we were still getting the advertisement with Golf Now, we were still getting point-of-sale computer support with Golf Now, we were still getting all their marketing support, but we were still losing that revenue. Now, on days that we weren't full out there, we could absorb that, we would absorb it anyway. But on days, especially in the wintertime, where we would be losing that revenue, it would result in a pretty good amount of revenue. So when we knew that this contract was coming up for renewal in one June, I kind of set the parameters with our Director of Golf, and I asked Greg to go out there and do the negotiating. So Greg did the heavy lifting here, got in the weeds with the negotiating, and I think did a great job in that we are no longer losing the revenue from those so-called trade times. We are still keeping the point-of-sale computer support, the advertising that Golf Now gives us, and all the benefits, and just paying a flat fee through the year of $38.70. So I'll turn it over to Greg, see if Greg could add anything.
Yeah, that about covers it. Again, Golf Now provides us point-of-sale, online tee times, marketing, all the support. And their support has been wonderful through the years. Our customers are fairly used to booking a tee time now, you know, with their software. Obviously, our cashiers and our golf shop staff is very used to the Golf Now software as well. So we really didn't want to go out and change if we didn't have to. So again, like Mr. Griffin said, I think this is a great, great 50/50 deal with Golf Now, where we will no longer have to get into the trade times with them, just pay the flat fee and still be able to utilize all the software.
Can you say how long the agreement is for? The agreement, how long is the agreement?
Two years.
It's two years.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you very much. With that, I guess I'll move approval of Item F.
A second.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on this? Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Thank you.
And it brings us up to Committee Reports and Appointments. We have a Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. We have a couple openings or expiration, Ms. Williams?
Yes. Mr. Pachel's position has... Yes, Mr. Pachel's position has expired, he would like to serve again. And then we have Mr. Tennerwitz who resigned, so we have that opening. So, you have the incumbent that would like to serve again, and you have the two alternates that would like to move up, and you have two applicants as a result of the advertisement. Ms. Gilroy is here, and I'm not sure if the other is here, but Mr. Pachel and Ms. Fleischer's here.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to appoint Mr. Pachel to the regular member position to expire May 31st, 2019, and Ms. Fleischer to the regular member position, that's the unexpired term of Mr. Tennerwitz, to expire May 31st, 2017.
Okay, I don't have any fine with that.
Okay.
And that leaves us the...
So, that means we have an alternate position that's...
We have the alternate position, so I would welcome listening to either, any of the new applicants for the alternate position.
All right. Is Ms. Gilroy here?
Yes.
All right. Would you like to come up and introduce yourself and see if the council, just come up, state your name for the record and where you live?
Yes, hello. My name's Corinne Gilroy, and I live on J Street, or 572 J Street, and I've lived in Sebastian for three years, three months, and I've been in touch with the city, I guess, Ms. Williams, and I've submitted application and resume and some supportive documents and so on, and, I don't know, I come from a background of physical education and parks and recreation. I also worked for the Bureau of Prisons for over 10 years, and I worked in a plumbing company with my father for 12 years, but my interests and strengths are in physical education and parks and rec. I also spent over 20 years in California, and worked over 11 years in park and recreation, predominantly with children, and in different facilities ranging mostly from San Francisco to San Diego, Bay Area.
All right, thank you. Council, any questions for Ms. Gilroy?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Is Ms. Ramos here?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to appoint Ms. Gilroy to the unexpired term vacated by Ms. Fleischer's appointment.
All right, so, I agree with that. Basically, Mr. Pasco's reappointed, Ms. Fleischer's moving up to the A team, and then Ms. Gilroy is moving up to the alternate position. Okay, very good. All right, thank you, everyone, for your service, and we got plenty of boards out there, and with other openings, anybody who wants to serve, thank you. Any other committee reports? Well, we had an MPO meeting this morning, and we were discussing, it came up about the Unified Planning Work Program for the next couple of years, and we were able to get on that plan about getting traffic light devices over by the Joy Haven and Barber Street. You know, the MPO has graciously said they'd put it in the plan. So, Frank came down also and gave a good presentation as well, so.
Mr. Mayor, could I interrupt? Is that the Joy Haven and Concha, or just the...
Joy Haven and Concha, I guess Frank had said, you know, two signals, so, and of course, that's, you know, I think it's just an intersection, just something bad waiting to happen, because there's awful blind spot down there. Public hearings, we have none. Unfinished business, item 10A, consider Waste Management's First Amendment to the franchise agreement. Is this you, Mr. Ginsburg?
Well, it's from staff. The city council approved the proposal by Waste Management previously. It was reduced to writing. What you have in your kit is the original franchise agreement first, and then you've got the proposed change. So, we've worked with Waste Management to get what they proposed into legal language. If you approve it tonight, it will then be the First Amendment to the franchise agreement, be included in the franchise agreement.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ginsburg. Anything to add, Mr. Griffin?
Just a couple things. On page one of the First Amendment is a blank of that, for a date that we would fill in there. Ostensibly, the council would designate some date for the distribution of the $40,000. The other thing to consider in the new section 13.23, commercial recycling, that will, and it's stated in there to commence on 1 May, obviously, we're past that now, so I would urge the council to try to modify, or to ask for a modification of that, and move that on perhaps to the 1st of June, and then extend the out date another month to the 1st of September, for example. But that's, those are the only comments I have, and I'd recommend approval.
Mr. Mayor? I agree with that extending it. Do you know if there's been any bite on that at all yet?
No, I don't, but there are some Waste Management representatives here this evening, and they could answer those questions, sir.
All right, Mr. Hill?
No, I, Mr. Mayor, I was just going through the documentation, and it has clearly outlined everything that we were discussing at the last meeting. It seems as though everything and all of the concerns that were had by any council member are pretty much taken care of in here. The only thing that I had question with was whether or not, when reading the background material, the $40,000, it didn't necessarily state that it would be for another purpose, but in the actual documentation, it does clearly state that essentially that $40,000 will be paid to the city and used for whatever we desire. So, I think that was the main concern of Ms. Koi. I think that's pretty much covered. So, I would make a motion to approve the First Amendment to the franchise agreement with the dates to be inserted by the city manager.
All right, second. Anyone from the public wish to speak on disagreement, change? Anybody from Waste Management want to say anything? All good.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Deana Ryder Hicks, Public Affairs Manager with Waste Management. First off, just wanted to thank you all once again. We're really excited about this opportunity, and especially with the commercial recycling. We've already, with your direction from the last meeting, we've already started promoting it, but we certainly don't have an issue with extending it another month, with extending the promotion. So, our commercial account manager, Kurt Hawker, has been talking with some businesses already here in the city of Sebastian, and there is some interest. So, there's a buzz that's beginning about it, so we're pretty excited about that. But certainly, we can extend it to August 31st, or September 1st, whatever date you desire. We'll just have to rework some of our promotional materials that are already out there that have that July 30th date on it, but we can easily do that.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right. Any further council discussion? Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor McPartlin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that motion passes, it leads us up to item 10B, city council goals and objectives for fiscal year 2017. Mr. Griffin?
By resolution, the council is asked to provide their goals and objectives for the next year. The resolution says, I believe, that it'll be in a workshop form, but here we are in open public meeting, and this is, certainly would apply, I think. So, if we could hear some goals and objectives for the next years for the direction of the charter officers, that would be at your direction. Also, also calls for evaluations of the charter officers by the city council, and also an in-person review of that from time to time, when council is prepared for that.
All right. I just gave you an evaluation, why I gotta give you another one? All right, I gotta give you another one?
Yeah.
Okay. So, then it's just Mr. Ginsburg, and then I guess Ms. Williams at the end of the probationary period, who would be due, would she still be due at the end of the probationary period, or you gotta wait a term?
There's not a probationary period. It's, her contract said in three months.
In three months?
Yes.
So, the evaluation would be based on the end of the three months?
Yes.
Okay. So, are we looking at July to be due?
I think in June, end of June, because she was appointed in March.
Okay.
So, April, May, June.
Okay, so then it would be June for you, Mr. Ginsburg?
And every...
And you, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
We're good with you. Everybody else give Mr. Griffin his evaluation, or?
I give him evaluations every time I'm sitting up here, so.
Okay, well, you gotta write it out on pay for this time, okay?
Yeah, I have to do a formal one and submit it.
Right, you can't say it's all up here, so.
He's good.
All right, and then I guess as far as, you know, looking at goals for the coming year, I would just say, you know, one of the big ones again is looking at the roads, looking at the drainage, and then I guess, you know, I'd like to see, I know it probably is going to wind up being a sore spot, but that blading of the grass, you know, where, I mean, because that's one way to, that's gonna make the roads last a bit longer, you know, that way the roads not, I mean, the water's not sitting on the road, especially when we get to rainy season. So, anything else, anyone have goals?
No, I think, again, I believe this council on a, every two weeks that we're sitting up here, we express our goals and objectives, certainly for the coming weeks and for the months. I would say that as we go into the budget period, that we have to be as fiscally conservative as possible, understanding that although property values are increasing, and we're starting to see more builds, so we're generating more funds into the revenue, we have to be cognizant of the fact that we have been running a lean ship, and I think government should be lean, so let's be careful. My goal would be to, at a minimum, see rollback in the budgeting process, and of course, maintain the level of service that we've had, and we've all come to love and enjoy here in this community.
The only thing I would add to that is for us to continue with our excellent customer service, and also our plans for whatever we can do to help the health of the lagoon.
All right. I guess the customer service is almost like a given. These guys do just fantastic work, and they have that gold seal of excellence going forward. You need anything else on that, Mr. Griffin?
Sir?
No? Okay. All right, all right. This leads us up to public input. Anyone from the public who wish to speak on something not already on the agenda? Yes, sir?
My name is Bob Stephen, I live at 150 Concha. I'd like to thank you all for hearing me tonight. Excuse me. I also want to thank you for the reprieve we've had on the glyphosate on the Collier and Alken waterways. It's been a few weeks since we've had, well, it's actually been about nine weeks, and things are looking really nice, as again, I'm going to extend invitation, if you'd like to come to my house and see what it is, looks like today, see what it looked like before, I have the pictures, we have the real life right in front of my house today. Mother Nature is good, she's bringing things back. The scientists involved say we still need to get the muck out of our freshwater systems, but baby steps, little things at a time. The glyphates and other chemicals we've been using were deadening for our waterways, and that's why the muck's gotta come out eventually, once we get it straightened out. Last time, maybe a couple months ago, we talked about a lawsuit for the city, I wanted to clarify that. Those high-end lawyers that were involved in that lawsuit were heading that lawsuit towards Monsanto's, the corporation that manufactures these chemicals. It wasn't against the city of Sebastian. The only thing the city of Sebastian might be concerned with is like on the tobacco lawsuits, and that is, are we letting the public know what we're putting on our waterways, what they're breathing in? I think they have the right to know that, so maybe that's something that the city ought to be concerned with, is let's let people know what we're using for poisons, all right? And please, if you can possibly do this, we need to, we need to think about hiring people that are going to be pro-ecology here for this movement, and we need to hire a large workforce. We're going to need to do a lot of physical work, just like we did after World War II, World War I, WP programs. Let's go to work, let's make the city right without chemicals, and remember, money's available to do this right now. There's money right now available. There's a meeting, two meetings this week, one of them, management meeting tomorrow, and then there's a council meeting here on Friday. If we could get a plan together for the city, we can get a hold of some money to do these things the right way. Mr. Graham's here this evening, he's at the FAU Haba branch. There's a class on muck. I wanted to go, but I wanted to be here too, and I want to thank you very much for hearing me.
Well, thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on anything? All right, that leads us up to item 12, new business. Authorize the city manager to engage Richard Aldrich of Perfect Systems to study the city MIS and provide a report. Mr. Griffin?
Yes, sir. It's, as we get more complex in the things that we do, and the IT and MIS needs that we have, it's become apparent to me and to others in management that we really need to have a fresh look at what's going on in our MIS systems with the city. As you might remember, about four years ago, we did have a consultant come in and take a look at our system, and the net result of that was that the consultant said, "Well, you need $150,000 of new hardware," which the city spent the money to go out and get, and we deployed that. We have that deployed now, but now, it just seems like we need to have a fresh look, fresh set of eyes at the system itself, its capabilities, our telecommunications, things like that. So, the Administrative Services Department, our CFO, Ken Kilgore, myself, and the HR manager, Cynthia Watson, did some interviews. We interviewed Mr. Aldrich from Perfect Systems, he's based in Vero Beach, he's got a lot of experience doing this type of thing. He's worked for some pretty significant players in the industry, Arthur Andersen, United Airlines, some financial institutions. He's very aware of security and our security needs. So, we're coming forward tonight to ask that you allow us to engage him in this consultant work to the tune of $16,700, not to exceed, and I'll turn it over to Ken to see if he wants to add anything.
I'll just expound further on the fee. It'd be done in four phases, and the first phase is going to be for those things we're most at risk for, or most concerned about, which is, of course, like a, some kind of malware, or some kind of threat to the system. We're also concerned about having, you know, an emergency plan with the hurricane season coming. We, that's a fresh look that we're taking at our plan on, in that respect. So, like I say, he's going to focus on the immediate risk first, and we'll proceed from there. It's, I think, a very reasonable fee for the kind of information we'll get from him. I would stress that he is not a salesperson, he's not trying to peddle equipment. It will be hopefully an independent look at what we would best do in our case.
All right. Council, any questions for staff? Yes, Mr. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was hoping Mr. Aldrich would be here today, so I could ask him a question or two. First thing was, is there a projected duration for this project?
Yeah, we have an estimated timeline of 90 days.
90 days, okay. And as far as the people conducting the study, is it just Mr. Aldrich, or does he have others working with him?
No, he would be doing it personally. He would be doing the interviewing and compiling the report himself.
Okay, do you know if he's seizure-certified? Criminal justice information systems. There's a certification regarding systems that are law enforcement systems. Anyone touching those systems need to have that seizure certification. It's just to make sure that, you know, you meet certain criteria, because you're going to be touching systems that contain sensitive data.
And I'm not, in our discussions, I don't believe he was anticipating that he would be hands-on, or actually having access to that system. I know he's worked around those systems and other locales, but we certainly protect ourselves in that regard, if that is, you know, something he's going to be doing.
That's something I would want to make sure that he has that certification, just because... just because law enforcement is a part of our system, and you can't never be too careful.
If I could, if I could interject, I, I believe that certification is, don't want to minimize it, certainly. It's important. I have that certification. I took the test, took the little course, took the test, and I was able to get it. We could make that a, his being hired a contingent, contingent upon him getting that certification.
He, yeah, he already might have it. I just wanted to verify. That's pretty much all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I guess my only question, he's gonna come up with a plan. What's it gonna be? The pie in the sky platinum plan, then a gold plan, and like a silver plan? You know, what's in our budget, or he's just gonna do an evaluation? I mean, he's gotta have recommendations, correct?
I think anything we do is, is frugal. The last thing, but we want to be efficient, and we want to get the best bang for the buck. One of the things that has worried me over the years is that we are not getting the capabilities out of our system, or we're not getting the service out of the system, and we have the capability. Maybe another way to, to do those types of things. For example, we've bought a number of servers over the past probably two years, significant amount of money. I mean, now there's a way to move a lot of that information, security permitting, up to the cloud, quote unquote, and to spread this information around, and that would give us the backup that we would need also. This is one of the things that he's, he's a proponent of. I kinda like that. I'm always worried about us having a hurricane event, some sort of natural disaster, and our servers are, you know, under a foot of water or something, so I like that part about it. I just think that, that we need to have a lot of really technical questions answered that management really can't answer on our own, and we just don't have that kind of expertise. So, I think this is a prudent thing to do. I think it's cost-effective. For the, for the number here, sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars, I'm expecting a pretty good bang for the buck, and we'll report back from time to time as to, as to the direction this is going and, and some of the things that we see, some of the deliverables that we're getting.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve, you know, doing the money with, and checking on, making sure they have that CJIS ability, certification, diploma.
Second.
That's a clear motion in a second, so I'm pretty comfortable with that. Anyone from the public wish to speak on, on this matter? Any further council discussion?
No, sir.
Roll call, Ms. Williams.
Mayor McPartlin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Ginsburg, you have anything for us tonight?
Nothing tonight, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Griffin, anything additional?
One thing. My, my strategy in building these agendas is to really look one or two meetings ahead, at least one meeting ahead. So, when I was building this agenda last week, I'm looking forward to the May, May twenty-fifth meeting, and I know pretty much if something's going to bubble up and where we are, for example, if there's going to be a contract that's gonna come forward and to bring it to council. What's happened here, what's going to happen in the next two weeks is actually what happened last year about this time, and that really, we're really coming into kind of a dead zone as far as issues that are bubbling up that really warrant a full-blown council meeting. So, in the next couple days, I'll really be taking a closer look at this, and if it looks like that nothing really significant is bubbling up, I will be in contact with members of council and requesting that we cancel the May twenty-fifth meeting, and I'll let you know about that in the next couple days.
All right. Thank you. Anything further?
I'm sorry, sir.
Anything else?
That's all.
All right. Ms. Williams?
Yes. On the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, Vice Mayor Adams, he cannot back up Vero Beach, and I was wondering if Mayor McPartlin or Councilmember Hill wanted to go, and I do have two others to ask when they come back.
Well, I had, I had seen the date, but I had already put in my calendar the special education at Sebastian River High School, they have their dance inclusion show at eight-thirty in the morning there, and I kind of, I already told them that I was gonna appear, you know, for the, the special education students, and I'd hate to.
That's important.
You know, cancel on them, so.
Okay.
I mean, if you can't get anybody else to go, you know.
I will be unavailable that day.
You will be available?
Unavailable.
Unavailable?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I'll check with the others.
All right. Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Williams? All right. Well, these are just the city council matters, so I guess I can take up Ms. Coy and Mr. Gilmore's time while I'm here, you know? I guess, you know, just a couple things I can, you know, say is that, you know, we, we held a final meeting for the Community Health Improvement Plan for Indian River County, and there were four initiatives that came out of there, and the big one was obesity because that affects a lot of health throughout everything, and one of the things they were looking at, I told them to get in touch with the MPO, because they're looking at bike paths, sidewalks, greenways and everything, ways that they can reduce obesity, as well as environmental health was something that they want to look into, you know, trying to get people off of, off of septic, onto sewer. So, I tell them, I said, hey, you gotta engage the local communities like we have, you know, the grant program down along the riverfront to get people off of there. And then again, like I mentioned, mental health was a big one, raising awareness and building capacity, as well as infant mortality, which is a, it's actually a tremendous problem in, on the Treasure Coast. We, especially in the African-American community, infant mortality, their, their rate is four times that of white people. And I was down at the NAACP meeting Monday night, they had a forum, our infant mortality, and what can we do to, you know, not only acknowledge that there's a problem, but what can be done to try and reverse that? So, that was just some of the things going on. And I attended a program last week at the Sebastian River Middle School that Barney Jordan has been after me for a while, the Americanism Program that they do for the students, and, and they've been able, not only just in Sebastian, but gotten it throughout the county, and I was there for about an hour, and just, you know, just to see the students and to see the, I hate to say old veterans, but senior, senior veterans, you know, presenting to the students and then just seeing the students get engaged, as well as, you know, May thirtieth is Memorial Day, you know? It's a day to honor those who've given the ultimate sacrifice, serving under the military, protecting us. So, if we don't have a meeting at the end of the month, I want to make sure that, you know, we know that there is a ceremony that will be happening, May thirtieth, eleven o'clock, down at Riverview Park, and encourage everybody to come down and see it. So, that's all I have. Mr. Hill? Mr. Adams?
Nothing today. Thank you.
All right. Being no further business, this meeting's adjourned.